You want me to do it?
Oh, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order the meeting of the measure Jay will decide commission July seventeen twenty twenty six. And tonight we have several guests including the city clerk, Brenda Free, who is planning on the election. Um. Let's see if we do vocal office.
Yes. Make sure I got it all. Commissioner Isaac. Commissioner Kravitz.
Present.
Commissioner Shown.
Present.
Commissioner Thickpen.
Present.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Present.
Commissioner Newby.
Here.
Commissioner Travis.
Present.
Vice Chair Davis.
Present.
Chair Sipkins.
Present.
All right, please join me in standing and face in the flag where we'd say a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, for the nation, for your heart, the invisible, the routine, and what's it called? All right, let me turn the uh meeting over if I can. To the city clerk who's gonna do the election of officers for the next just a year.
All right, thank you all, Brenda Free, City Clerk. Uh, welcome to all new members, good to see you all, we so appreciate you guys and the work that you do serving on this important condition. My position or my my purpose for today's meeting is to conduct your election for your chair and your vice chair. So at this time nominations are in order and open for the position of chair.
Uh, Madam City Clerk, I would like to respectfully request that our chair stay in office since he got us through uh all of those crazy, crazy applications last year, we have a lot more work to do, so. The nominations for Chair Sipkins.
Any further nominations? Seeing none without objection, nominations are closed. So Chair Peter Sipkins has been nominated for chair, all in favor, signify by eight.
Is there some?
Signify by eight.
We'll say it first.
Signify by A, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, Aye, any opposed, say no. As having, so Peter Sipkins is your chair. Nominations are now in order for the position of vice chair, are there any further nominations, any nominations for vice chair?
Yeah, City Clerk, I nominate Commissioner Kravitz.
Give him for the nominations.
I nominate Commissioner Kravitz as well.
Seeing none without objection, for the position of vice chair, Jason Kravitz has been nominated. All in favor, signify by seeing, yes, yays.
Yays.
Any opposition, say no. Seeing none, at this time, I would like to accept a motion to 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 accept the election of Peter Sipkins as your chair and Jason Kravitz as your vice chair with a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, and you can talk the world out of me, please?
Yes. Commissioner Kravitz.
Yes.
Commissioner Shown. Commissioner Thickpen.
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Newby.
Yes.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis.
Yes.
Chair Sip.
Yes.
Motion carries eight, yeses, zero nos, at this time, Commissioner Peter Sipkins, you're meeting.
Thank you, please. The next item, next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the agenda, when ever motion to accept the agenda that was by the Michigan Secretary.
One second.
Is there a second?
I second one.
Well, all in favor of accepting the agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, next item on the agenda, item number six.
Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt you a second, I just was notified by Madam Clerk that you all wanted some information on the next steps for the unscheduled vacancy that you currently have, was that?
That is, that is right, yes.
So the process is per the Madi Act for an unscheduled vacancy, the city clerk has been informed that you have an unscheduled vacancy. And so we will open up what we call a notice of recruitment. Um, and and we'll accept applications for anyone that that wishes to apply for uh that vacancy. Uh, and then we have to allow ten days before anybody can act or council can appoint. Uh, it will return back to the agenda as an appointment or for full counsel to uh make recommendations and select someone from that from that pool, we also have a pool where we did our uh campaign. And so we will use those applications as well to submit to counsel to review and make recommendation. But that's that process, the Madi Act, it requires us to open a notice and to bring it back before counsel for approval.
Thank you.
Any questions? Yeah.
If one is a um alternate and submitted an application in the last round and remains an alternate, are they?
They're considered.
They're considered, so they're not there up to submit another application.
Hmm. No, because they're in the pool already. So everybody that has submitted doing the open re- open recruitment period are considered still valid and active. So we will include all applications from the original pool that we did in March to April.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Were you in that pool or were you in the pool before?
I think it was eleven.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's definitely you've been on the commission longer. In a good way.
So there, we do have some conversation with council in reference to updating the current resolution, the the resolution itself is really old. You know, and so alternates were not necessarily included. Um, the language doesn't say, hey, how do we handle alternates, are they voting, are they non-voting? Do they automatically move up? So we have those questions that we have taken your concerns, we have heard some of those questions. And we will, I think in September, we'll bring back to rescind the old resolution and add what we're currently doing, and you should see some language in there that address alternates, you know, how they move about and and what the consideration is for, so that's forthcoming, but that's the current practice right now, it's what we're gonna do, so you are in that pool. Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes, late fifteen, uh two thousand and twenty-five. I have a motion to approve those minutes. So we please make a motion to approve those minutes. Yes, I think we have a motion, is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Does anybody have any comments, directions, amendments to those minutes? If not, all in favor of accepting amendments as submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment, uh next, public comments?
No.
No public comment. Okay, the next, uh.
Thirty?
A rare, a rarity.
Let's go, where they call it.
Next item on my agenda is welcome comments from the most of the commission, first of all, thank the commission for um wanting me as a chair for a second term, I appreciate it, and uh I I hope I continue to earn your respect and that we continue to work very well together as we have in the past. But I'd like to talk about three other commissioners as we go forward, first, the vacancy that uh City Clerk we talked about is Lauren Wolfher, Commissioner Wolfher. Commissioner Wolfher um and her fiance have moved out of the city in Palm Springs. And because she is no longer a resident in Palm Springs, she can no longer serve on the commission. So she submitted her resignation to the council and was accepted, I believe, at the last council meeting. Uh, so that is the vacancy. Um, she, uh, I thought was an extremely strong commissioner, she had very strong comments, very strong opinions. She was a great advocate for things that she was in favor of, and I think that we're gonna miss her on the commission. She asked me to read, and I promised her I would, if I can find it on my phone. I've got it handy, of course I don't. Um, let me read you what she sent me a few minutes ago. It has been a tremendous honor to serve with you all. I am deeply proud of what we've accomplished together and so grateful to have worked alongside such a thoughtful and committed group. I am sad to step away, but I am no longer a Palm Springs resident. Huge thanks to Chair Sipkins for your leadership and to Chris Melissa and Joelle for all your hard work and support. Wishing you all the very best, so that's Commissioner Wolfher. I also want to thank Vice Chair Davis for serving as vice chair in the last year. Vice Chair Davis and I started to serve on this mission together two years ago, we did not know each other before then. Um, but we became very symbiotic and worked extremely well together. She quickly recognized my faults and weaknesses and and filled it and filled in the gaps including whispering in my ear occasionally when she was sitting next to me, what did you just say? And kicking me under the table on occasion, but uh we did, we did work extremely well together, she is unbelievably helpful, very, very bright and has a lot of energy and I thought it was a great uh, we we were basically co-chairs, and so Commissioner Davis, thank you very much, and I'm glad you're saying that question.
Yes.
And thank you. And and finally, to the new vice chair, the energy, the ever-ready energizer battery.
A compliment?
I remember during the interview when the council asked questions of those of us who were in attendance about the applicants and asked me what uh to describe you, and I said, the best way to describe you, Commissioner Kravitz, was we received fifty-two applications for measure J funds on a Wednesday. And a few days later on Friday, we had a spreadsheet review with comments on every single one of them. So.
I have free time.
So I I went forward to, we're gonna have a lot of work in the coming year, and I I am looking forward to your assistance, so thank you. All right, that's it for me, new business, San Rafael turf conversion. Um. Want to come up and talk about it?
Yes, we have. Nice.
Okay, good.
All right. Hey, everyone, it's great to be with you, Michael Mattson, Kimberly Horn, I guess, saw you all, some of you at least about a year ago, so back to talk about um a new topic, San Rafael turf um reduction project, so um let's see, I don't know if you all are familiar, so let's see, do we have the presentation?
Yes.
Um, for those that can sort of picture things in their their head, this is at the northwest corner of San Rafael and um North Sunrise Way, there's a very large um turf area that's there outside of a residential space. Um, if you think about the opposite side, there you go, you can kind of kind of see this in the aerial, so talking about basically all the green that you see there. Um, and if you can kind of see in the aerial, it's it's hard to tell because it's faded back a little bit, but if you look right across the street, um, you can see that the landscape looks totally different. It's kind of got like a sand color, it's it's more um DG and granite, and it's it's more of what's appropriate for for a desert space, so you know, when I first um got in touch with Aaron Christian on this project, it was the things that were talked about were, you know, we're kind of wasting water here, we're doing a lot of maintenance in terms of mowing the lawn, overseeding, fertilizing, things like that, and this is not a good look, this is not the way we want to be spending our money. And so totally get that, um, and we're we're here and excited to to help with this um project, so you know, some of the things we talked about were, let's reduce water, uh, let's introduce shade if we can. Let's look at native species, um adaptive species, pollinators, if we can, um, and really let's look at this opportunity to create a a community example of, you know, what can be done um as far as a water-wise landscape space, so folks can look at this and actually apply this to their own, to their own yard. Um, hopefully, there'll be some some good curb appeal here, and uh we also talked about uh nighttime, what happens there right now? You have a bus stop, um, you've got residents on the other side that are separated really with with just a wall there, and there's not too much lighting, so we talked about introducing some low voltage uh landscape lighting to uplight the trees and just to provide some light in the space so that folks can see in and it's not, you know, folks don't have the opportunity to get lost in the shadows. Let's see, kind of talked about this one, maybe we can go to the next slide. I'm sure you're open to this. So this is a little bit more of of what you've got out there, lots of turf. Um, you can see, uh, there's that power pole in the top left, you can see how it's sort of washed out on the bottom. That's from the uh the rotors, the irrigation hitting that um day after day after day. Uh, there are just, there's very little shade, there's evidence that there was a lot of trees out there at one point, but those have been cut down um either from disease, the ones that are left show signs of a lot of damage from um extreme pruning over the years because there's power lines right above them. And then, of course, not only power lines right above, but there are um all sorts of utilities below. So it's really a bit of a minefield, so I'll tell you a little bit uh more about how we're going to address that. Uh. So, yeah, and it's in the irrigation, like I mentioned, so it's it's a lot of water being used to to keep this space free. So what we've done so far, so just wanted to take you through the timeline, so back in January, we we had a kickoff meeting on site and we walked the site, we looked at all of the the fun things that are out there and really looked at areas nearby and the potential for this space. On on, in March, we presented a concept and we got some feedback from the city. In April, we revised that concept and sent that back to the city, got got some more comments from them. And then in May, we started to look into, you know, what is this concept gonna cost, uh, you know, and what might be the next steps? So we updated the concept even further to dial in our numbers and I'm here today to to share all this with you. So I already mentioned that there's the surrounding utilities there um to be aware of, and but all of the um challenges really are outweighed by the opportunities here, so again, I I mentioned some of these things, but just wanted to highlight, uh, we've worked closely with the city to look at the um native plant guide that they want us um to be implementing and also to look at a tree, uh, an improved tree palette, which is broken out into looking at special situations, especially where you have utility lines. Um, so that we're using the right tree, but we're also using the right tree considering its mature height. Uh, so that if we do put something in under a power line, years later, we're not having to hack it back, and it's not susceptible to disease and things like that. Um, instead of turf, there will be no turf, um, we're looking at introducing the desert aesthetic. So um think decomposed granite, crushed rock, mulch. Um, and I mentioned the low voltage lighting, and then in terms of irrigation, it would be low water use irrigation, so most likely drip emitters at the shrubs and bubblers at the trees. So here is a rough concept, sort of um zoomed in in a little way, it's it could be a bit tough to see on the screen, but the big picture is you can see those trees, that's a rough layout right now, we're waiting until we get our survey information back, um, which is in process right now, um, they should be starting actually as soon as tomorrow out there to get some survey information so that we can place the trees. Um, we wanted to give consideration to the utilities, to the nearby residents, and to the folks that are using the sidewalk, walking to and from the bus stop, so to try and provide some opportunity for shade without trying to pull people into the space as it's really someone's extension of their backyard right there. Um, the large area that you see that's a little bit darker brown, that is currently, it's 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 all sotted and it's a drainage basin that really is only used, you know, during a storm event. So right now, we talked about putting some rock in there, perhaps we could introduce some more trees if that becomes something that budget will allow, and and as we talk through the the uh concept, if that's something that becomes desirable. But we wanted to keep it a clean look, um, have, you know, visuals through the space so that we're not introducing a scenario that could introduce the opportunities for folks to hide out, um, especially near residential. Uh, but we wanted to keep it simple, clean, but also as you look towards the back wall, you'll see the um the darker mulch there, and those are the areas where we were thinking of having those pollinator plants and things tucked away from the high traffic, um, from pedestrians, bicyclists and vehicles. Here's a closer look at some of the species that we um pulled from all of the different guidebooks that that we worked with the city to pull. And uh we feel really confident that these, this is a really bulletproof palette. Uh, it's perfect for this site, I think one of the challenges when we looked into the tree species that are out there is they're not necessarily, you know, the right tree for this space, the climate or um height-wise and spread-wise. So we started to look into cost, and um in terms of site prep, that basically is, you know, let's scrape the site, let's make sure that we've got a clean site to work with. Um, that came out to thirty-two five, and then landscape and irrigation, when we talk landscape and irrigation, that is, you know, all the plant material, all the rock, all the things that go along with it, um, if we have weed fabric, um, we factored that in there, um, and it's all the irrigation. The good thing is, we've got um electrical power out there, so we can tie right in and hopefully reuse an irrigation controller and also tap right into that for power for the low voltage lighting. Um, so our total project cost came out to about two thirty-five um based on this concept. And of course, impacts, as I've shared, you know, water savings, community branding, um, and community water-wise landscape example. Uh, I think right now, when I have gone by there, there are times where you see puddles of water, uh, where there's been overspray and runoff. And I I think that this is really just the right thing to do, so I'm excited to be a part of this. Uh, as I mentioned, the survey is is underway, and then in mid-August, we're looking to start construction document um production. And hopefully, mid-September, we'll get this to the city for review. And uh final plans in the middle, probably early November, and then I think at that time, we would also look into, you know, the best time for um project bidding and setting a construction schedule. So that's, that's where we are right now, and welcome, any questions you guys might have?
I have a question, what uh is the neighborhood in Palm Springs, and there's some projects allocated? And have you gone to the neighborhood and asked for their support?
And I defer to uh
I guess, sunrise, Raphael neighborhood, and we have reached out to their uh neighborhood organization leaders. Um, we did let them know that we're doing tonight, and we already submitted the presentation. Um, I don't think that they can make it, but we did really make it some presentations to their neighborhood.
I have a question.
Go on.
Uh, so if I'm not mistaken, that quarter piece, there's the grass, but then there's also another section in the middle that has the same thing, so if we make this the desert landscape, aren't we gonna be in the same situation if we don't go all the way up to that? I think there's like a trailer development or something. If it's the right, if it's the area that I'm thinking, the sunrise trailer homes and something, so if you go, you can take me.
We're getting there.
This way?
Um, actually, if we go back to the first slide, that's just the area.
So if you go up more, yeah.
There we go.
Over here.
Okay.
If you go up more towards this way, isn't it still like the grassy area right there, are we gonna do that as well, or is it just this piece?
It is, it is just that this piece is is our scope, so I I don't know, Aaron, if you all have further plans.
Sure, yeah, it's just this thesis, this is the force for senior property, and I just wanted to give some context and to give you information, uh, Aaron Bergerson, uh, product manager of Public Works, uh, I didn't introduce Michael. Uh, the context here is that this was, um, I believe initially, community initiated project in uh twenty-two, so as you're aware, uh, I've been here the last year and a half trying to knock out these projects as quickly as possible, and so that's the context of this project, is that this was a community initiated project. It was just a regular project, okay, thanks. Yes, it's just a regular project, uh, yes, this is city-owned property.
Gotcha.
Mr. Ruby.
Yeah.
With respect to the potential impact on the neighbors that live in this area, is there any view impact from the trees?
Honestly, what we saw when we've been on site is the neighborhood sort of looks inward on itself, not necessarily out into this space. And we initially talked about in that large space there where there's the, you know, you could almost have a pathway over to the um to the bus stop. Uh, but we looked, and that's not being actively used um by pedestrians, so it might, there there might be an opportunity for a view into the space there at that corner. But everyone has a wall along the back of their property there, so if anything, it's gonna provide some curb appeal as they're entering their neighborhood, but not necessarily once they're in their home, does that make sense?
I was, my concern was, or question pertain more to someone, you know, in their backyard.
Sure.
Looking at the mountain. I do all the time, um, so, you know, if a tree came up and blocked my view, I might be a little annoyed, so.
I hear you loud and clear, um, I I think the way it's oriented, hopefully, folks would be looking towards the towards the mountain, because this this view right here, we're looking north, so um if folks are looking over to the over to the west, that'll still be clear, um, and if they're looking to the south, um, that's where the trees would be, the other thing to consider is that the the site does slope down a little bit from the back of that wall to the sidewalk, not a ton, but that will also help with any heights of trees.
Correct, yes.
So what is the budget that we had it for the twenty?
It was originally a hundred and fifty thousand, I think we spent about twelve on some design work. Uh, so it's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand in for the budget right now. The plan is, uh, Aaron and and David uh have uh submitted staff report to the council for the portable barricades project. That was about one point four million, they came in under budget by a couple hundred thousand, so the the theory was to take the savings from that uh budget to transfer to this budget if the commission approved to move the project forward.
So the project was already approved to move forward, and then you're just asking for additional?
Yeah, the project, the project already moved forward, the appropriation already appropriated, moving on from one project to another.
Then this is second question, just my curiosity, how much are we spending a year on water maintenance, do we have any sense?
Um, that's something I'll have to come back to.
Yeah, let me address this in the context also of the Paul Harris Commission request later tonight. Uh, I've had a conversation with Chris, maybe perhaps Melissa, that I think until we have a full budgeted presentation about the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which Chris intends to do, I think, at the September meeting, not tonight. Um, I think it's premature for us to start giving out money until we know how much we have. So, uh, with all due respect to both of the presenters tonight, um, my suggestion would be that we listen carefully, uh, but not hold any votes on appropriating the money until the September meeting.
Yeah, I I, good idea, we would we would re-engendize these two items for a vote by the commission on the twenty-first after the budget presentation.
Any other questions?
Oh, sorry, just one question on context, um, you mentioned that this was part of the original, like, so this was already approved, and this was part of the like normal run of projects, may I ask how these are prioritized, so like, is there a group of like conversion or like water saving, I mean, what kind of um bucket does this project fall in, and how is that prioritized?
Great question, uh, David Mac, being Public Works Director, to help Aaron a little bit, uh, it's a great question, really, a lot of this work in the last work in the last probably three or four years, if you notice, we've been doing a lot of turf conversion around the city. That's how this ties in. This is just one that we are just now able to get to. If you notice, a lot of the meetings throughout throughout the city and a lot of parkways, you've seen us already doing that, truly trying to capture all of it. So this is the last big, really big piece that we just need to get to.
Yeah, and just to clarify, thank you for that. Um just to clarify, is that sort of like, um does that come from like the strategic plans and then like is that one part of the so there there is there like a bucket, I guess, of turf conversion projects or or water saving kind of initiatives we're looking at throughout the city?
Yes and no. So in previous years, there were incentives and grants and things like that. If that's what you're getting at with some funding that was available for some of that, that's no longer the case. But yes, and there was some of that now, or in the past, I should say. Which is why some of those probably, but makes sense before my time would have happened first.
I'll I'll expand on that. I'll expand on that a little bit. So sustainability projects are a commission uh council priority, came out of the end part of the strategic plan. Um we are still, although there's no grant files, like David said, we're still, we still are continuing the partnership with D W A and doing turf conversion around the city. We're just using existing sustainability funds. So this happens to be a measure J project, we don't have to put pressure on the sustainability funds, hopefully to do something like this. Uh so a good measure J project that fits in with the council strategic plan.
Any other questions?
I have one very minor tactical question. What what is this thing here?
That is not a part of the project. That is, it it's a good question. Uh when we were over there, it looks as if at one point the road continued through to that property, and they have planted some turf there to to, you know, make that sort of monetize that for for the property there.
So that is not city property, or if it is, it's out of scope.
It's out of the scope of the project, yeah.
Because it does look, uh the juxtaposition between the desert scape to above it versus that is very different.
For sure. Very hard line there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation.
No, you're welcome. Thank you all.
I guess I was remiss in talking about the free treat by Parkville, I did not introduce the new commissioner. Uh you want to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Uh sure, so um. Carl Travis have been a resident of Palm Springs for twenty years. I'm in the commercial real estate. Uh it it does that, among other things, very interested in the budgeting process for measure J.
Thank you, you're welcome. All right, next uh Gary J, which of the two of you is gonna present?
Uh I'm Gary Armstrong. I'm the chair of the Public Arts Commission. And I'm gonna reframe a little bit from what you were talking about, Peter, because we're not asking for you to give us money, so just off. I actually wanted to get in front of measure J for one other reason, which was when all the community grants came in, because I heard from a lot of community members, oh, this should be this and measure J pushes to art and art is not art. Um and I want to go through the process we do, and I think it will help for you all to understand not only how we're funded, but how our projects work, and you have my presentation for that. So um the public arts fund, the public arts commission is responsible for maintaining the public arts collection. That's it. It's very, very simple. It's adding to the collection and maintaining the collection. So um there is a public arts fund that was set up. Hmm okay, there we go. Public Arts Fund, uh that's really just my title board. Thanks. Okay. So um so the Public Arts Fund really has many ways to get revenue into the fund. The first one is all funds collected through development dollars, and that's uh point five percent or uh half a percent for all new commercial industrial construction. We don't get that money until a permit is pulled. So um I had a conversation with a council member, and this is why you got the big complex, the warehouse, by the time I said the permit has not been pulled, we don't get that money yet. So the minute that permit is pulled, then we get our funds. So we will get our funds when the Chick-fil-A is approved, when the In-N-Out is approved, all those sort of things coming in, but we don't get our funds in advance for that. Okay, um and so our funds really shift from year to year. We really can't project, and you'll see what I mean by the following board. Uh two other ways we can get it is any funds appropriated by city council or donated to the city. And by donating to the city, they mean it could be, the city could apply for a grant. Um uh the the um sustainability commission could say, we're gonna do a grant so that all outdoor lighting for public art is solar powered. And we're gonna replace all that. That would be amazing, right? So that's what they mean by any other thing says a gift. And the last one is endowments, requests, grants or donations. Those could be individuals. So clarification here, we cannot use the money for anything apart for securing art, adding to the collection, maintaining it or installing it if the money comes from the first point. That is, that is very, very clear in our ordinances. It can only be so that we can't use it for education, can't use it for community outreach or anything like that. We can only do education, community outreach, if somebody gives an endowment. They say, we want you to use this for public arts education in uh Desert Highland or in Duth Park or something like that. So the that's why the money was moved for to um, it used to be that the art commission money helped keep the museum open free Thursday nights. Um that was moved out of the art commission budget, because we can't really do that. That's not adding to the collection and maintaining the collection. Okay, so again, anytime it has to be specifically for the collection, we cannot use our funds for anything that is utilitarian. So it cannot be for wayfinder signs. It cannot be for anything that's practical that way. It has to be in the collection. Okay, and then once it's in the collection, we are responsible for maintaining it. So I want to talk about um two projects that I'm going through here, and these are the Artscape in the Parks Program. So the Artscape in the Parks Program is the request from council to put substantial art in every city park. So we have art in a lot of the parks, but most people don't know it because it's improperly cited. And um it's just not very big. It could be like a little metal big corn sheep or something like that. So this is a substantial piece in everyone. What happened was I was in council on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, presenting it get approval on something else, and two council members said, why aren't you doing stuff in parks? Why are you doing it downtown? We want to see stuff in parks. And we said, fine, we'll come up with a program to do art in the parks. So it started May twenty twenty three. We started the discussion at our September twenty three meeting. We had a budget for Artscape approved by the Performing Art or the Public Arts Commission in February of twenty twenty four. Council approved the idea to proceed in February twenty twenty four. Now, the way we work is we say, here's an idea, here's the money it's gonna take. We want to ensure the council approves the idea and the money before we go and solicit from artists, and we don't want to buy anything, so we have to go through that process. So council approved it. It's okay to proceed with this concept and these specific parks. We identified the parks and how much we were spending. They gave us that amount to approve. Then we did an open call for artists. Open call has to be done with contract, it has to be very public, procurement runs it, everything is very, very legal and above board. The artists and the designs were then approved in September twenty four. Following month, we approved the allocation of funds in October twenty twenty four. So we're basically a year and a half already away from the original concept. Contracts are sent to the artists in January twenty twenty five. Oh, sorry, um everything is approved by council in November twenty twenty four, because they have to approve the specific artist and the specific design. So the ca contracts went to the artists in January twenty twenty five. All artists had a delivery date of May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Now, all the pieces are complete and waiting to be installed. We had a perfect storm. We had a perfect storm of, this is three budget cycles here, you can see. So one of the problems where ordinances are written, and I'm sure Chris and Jay are aware of this and they're working to fix it, is the development dollars go in. And there's nothing in the ordinances that give a clawback deadline where developers can ask for their money back. So a developer can say, I know I gave you my money five years ago, I want it back now. I'm gonna pu buy my own public art and you have to approve it. So all of a sudden, we can be with our budget can be gone two hundred thousand dollars. And we were not aware, we were not aware this was happening. All of a sudden, the money's gone. So it's not a great way to manage a budget, and everybody's aware of that, and it's a top priority for the mayor to make that shift as well. So we not only had the money disappear, we also had a situation with the the Ace Memorial where we approved sixty five thousand dollar donation for the installation, and council said, no, we think it should be a hundred and twenty thousand. We direct the commission to find that money. Again, we'd already budgeted stuff, so all of a sudden we're missing money on that. Missing that. And then over the course of three years, you can see, uh you also know what happened with the economy, and all of a sudden, everything is much more expensive. So, next one. Okay, so these are uh two, this is the first piece, this is one that is going in Sunrise Park, it's called Dragonfly. This is a shade structure plus art. Um now, I want to clarify based on what somebody asked, every piece of artwork that is going in a park, I personally went to every neighborhood association, reviewed the artworks, um some of them chose the artwork, we gave them options. And everything was reviewed with the Parks Commission, and these were reviewed as sustainability commissions. And so I'm really big on public outreach and getting people involved in public comment, wanting them to know what's going on in their neighborhood. Okay, so this is a butterfly, dragonfly, big shade structure that's going in Sunrise Park. Uh this is uh uh Parkside Gossip, this is a big piece that's going in Ruth Hardy Park. Uh these are four pieces, uh Desert Highland, Victoria, Gateway and Baristo. Now, these are significant pieces. Um the Victoria Park's dog, which looks like the Trojan horse to me, um that's fifteen feet tall. So all of these are twelve to fifteen feet. Okay, and then for context, in March, we toured all the locations with the representative from the Parks Department, Public Works and the Arts Commission and Jay, just to ensure everything, did the locations and the setting that. So this has been very methodical every step of the way. So um as I said, we've got shapes and sizes in Desert Highland, we've got Dancer Sticks in Gateway Park, Rover in Victoria Park, Spagoti in Baristo Park, Dragonfly in Sunrise Park and Parkside Gossip in Ruth Hardy Park. So we're hitting six parks. This is essentially substantial artwork across the entire city. So what we would request is we request an allocation of two hundred fifty thousand dollars into the fund. Now, this is money that will be paid back, because when we get our money from the development dollars from the warehouse and from other things, the money will come back to measure J. This is a situation where we were, as I said, it was a perfect storm, we budgeted, and all of a sudden, things beyond our control, and other people said, you still have to make do. Are there any questions, not only on the process, but the the ask and the artwork itself? Sure. Janice?
Thank you so much for um your explanation. This part of it was super helpful. Um one question I've had was, in terms of your charter, the collection, uh just turns on how and who determines what is in that collection. So as an example, um I'm curious if there are processes for community input, the way that we have in the community initiative projects, because we do see a number of these art projects, like the um the mural, for instance, in uh Duth Park. Like, why or or would could that have been considered as one as one uh part of the collection?
So are you talking about the Filipino? Okay, so that one I can talk about, because I was involved every step of the way. They came to us first, uh I think three years ago, and they said, we've got a mural. Here's what it is, we've got the design, we've got the artist, and I said, oh, that's very nice, this is nice mural. What do you want from the commission? And I go, we want you to pay for the whole thing. The problem is, they wanted it to be inside the building. And public art has to be available to the public eighteen hours a day. And it's it's, we can't do anything inside of a building. I said, I support it, but we can't fund it. I said, I said, why don't you do it outside? Find a way to do it outside, you know, work with the commission, we can help you come up with some ways to get that across. Back and forth, back and forth, and then they kind of disappeared, they just for whatever reason, I don't know. And then they came back. And they said, oh, we want to apply for a measure J grant, here's what we're doing. And I looked at what their presentation was, and I said, well, there's challenges with this design. Um I said, you know, it is, if your whole intent is education and the heritage, I said, it's twenty feet in the air. I said, you don't have a key, you don't identify who these faces are, who these people are. And I said, why don't you take this design, and if you're asking for a measure J, measure J grant, make a pony wall somewhere in the ground, like six feet tall. And I said, you could do the mural there, and on the back, you can do a key and explain the heritage, because I think the agriculture is a big heritage. I think they were late with their deadline with application, they just proceeded with what it was. Other key thing with murals, murals do not get initiated in the Arts Commission. Murals get initiated in planning. So planning would have to approve everything, and the only way that the Arts Commission gets involved is approving the aesthetic value of it. So and I said to them, I said, look, if you're doing this on the bill, you're gonna get the building department involved, you gotta get planning involved, you're adding to a building. You know, so there was just a lot of logistical things, not aesthetics aside, so.
Oh, yeah, so just kind of as a general stepping stepping back. Um in terms of de determining uh what comes into the collection, is that what, i is that voted upon just within the public arts commission or?
Well, that's the role of the commission. And as I said, we have uh public comment, as you do, and I'm very big on public comment, which is why I always go to the community meetings. And I go to the Parks Commission with everything going for public comment to that point, and I try and bring you the like I uh the Pillars of Palm Springs, down Topless Canyon, I even pulled in the Human Rights Commission, because they were representing the city, and I wanted them involved as well. So we promote it as much as we can um to get that feedback and involvement.
Yeah, so like very regularly, you get community input, public comment during commission.
And as I said, every every community has seen these pieces, and they're anxious for them, particularly Baristo.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I was just curious because we got so many uh sort of arts uh applications, art related applications, so yeah, as long as they, I mean, perhaps we can redirect from community initiated projects that are related to art to public comment at the public arts commission meeting. Thank you.
Um so as I said, these these six pieces are complete. And they're ready to be installed. We just need the money to install them. And then we can get these installed in September. And I know measure J has this history of the commissioners feeling like we're doing all this work and nothing ever happens, and we can get your funds used by September.
Just take you back, yeah, take you back enough your class, your questions. Um so for the art projects that did get approved through community initiated projects, who I think there were only a couple in the end, what will the commission, your commission's role be?
I haven't heard about anything being approved, so I don't know.
Filipino mural wasn't very, I believe, I don't remember uh for in-ground. Yeah, yeah, they, I think it was approved, stipulation that it's not attached to the building.
Okay.
It'll be a separate structure.
Yeah.
Um but we can send you the application on and what they proposed. Uh Nick Gonzalez, Parks Director, is um very involved. So it'll likely, since it's going into a park, uh it'll likely be a city project that he oversees, uh but I think almost said Vice Chair Davis, Commissioner Davis, uh is asking, uh what would your involvement?
Yeah, so this is, I haven't been, yeah, I haven't been informed of anything with art. Um I will say that if the mural is part of the arts collection, it has to be formally accepted into the arts collection. And council has to formally accept it in the collection as well, and then we're responsible for the maintenance, so. Otherwise, it's not public art. So it can be in the park and it's not public.
Well, listen, Chris, must there there was something involving Gateway?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I think it's it's.
There was a gateway.
Yeah.
I I have some context on that, because I live in that neighborhood. One of our, I mean, our neighborhood organization submitted that formally. Um and it was driven by one of the residents, actually recently left. Um but I think they were pushing for a very specific like art space in that part. Um so this was separate from the larger like parts plan or public art in different part from the city plans.
Yeah, so they came to us, but again, it's they wanted to do do spend around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in art in the in the piece, and um they came to us with the art and much like you guys have opinions as individual commissioners, generally, if people come to the art commission and say, we want you to fund this. It's like, well, we're the, we were put on here to choose the art. We were the, we're the gatekeepers of the art in that sense. Um from what I recall, when I did read the Gateway application, they switched out the art because the piece that they wanted you to find changed at the last minute. Now, for clarity, every piece of artwork that we put in is essentially treated like a building. So it has to get approved by the building department and planning department. It has to withstand a hundred and forty miles per hour wind. You know, all those things, especially a place like Gateway Park, and from what I recall, the piece that they submitted had this dangling thing in the middle, it's like, that will never fly. I mean, it will fly, so somebody's windshield, a Vistacino on Gina Motry, but so everything is very, very, very. I mean, it will fly, so it's, so it's windshield, a Vistacino on Gina Motry, but so everything is very, very, very regulated. And so there are times with art where like, I love it, but it can't withstand, you know, and the challenges, it's not just a universal challenge. You, stuff in uh, Desert Highland would be very careful about the materials there, because there's, there's, it's so wide open, it's so windy and it's DG everywhere, everything gets sandblasted. You know? So, as I said, we, and that, that's why we engage with the community. So the get, the community, they love these cactuses. They're quite looking forward to these cactuses being installed. And if you notice, the cactuses are all a little perforated. So that'll be great for this, for the wind.
So especially if you're not asking funding or asking for a short term loan, is that fair of that?
I'm going to trust the legal, the financial guys with language.
I just wanted, Jay Verona, Director of Housing and Community Development, um, just on the mural. Uh, there is a specific ordinance that the city has that designates how a mural should be approved. And as Chair Armstrong had indicated, it starts with the Planning Department. So, um, as that one moves forward, it would be important for it to go through that process. It starts with the Planning Department and then goes to the Public Arts Commission for aesthetic review.
And and to host the public hearing.
And and to host a public hearing uh, for input on it. So just wanted to let you know of those steps for murals specifically.
And the pub, and they cannot start construction until the hearing is held.
Chris, um, remember, we and City Council approved for that. We all did.
Maybe. Give me just a second. If anybody else has any questions.
I can share more art stories.
I did distract for the class, okay. Uh, are pieces that we have in storage that are unused? Do we ever sell those to try and boost up the fun?
So um, our ordinance is state we can. We can also decommission pieces. Um, it's this big expouse mystery that we have this warehouse filled with art. Uh, we, there's basically three pieces of artwork in storage.
That's it.
That's it. And one of them is a piece by an artist named Woodstavy. And it was in front of the Old Fashion Mall downtown. And they picked it up and moved it. It needs a lot of it. And it is, it's an interesting piece. It's sort of like um, skyscraper material with big boulders on it. And it's his style, but we can't put that in a public park. Because these big boulders on, you know, scaffolding, it's just saying, come climb this and knock these boulders down. So the, the only place that that would make sense is maybe by the convention center, maybe by the airport. Because it's a substantial piece. The other one is um, two pieces that are bronze and they were put into storage by people who don't like art, apparently, and it's sort of melted in a way on their side. So they probably need around seventy five thousand dollars worth of maintenance and that's probably worth more than the pieces are valued at. So that's it. And then we have a painted big horn sheet, but it's made out of paper. So, you know, it's not going inside.
What, what about the art that is set probably going to the top of River Development Project?
We have the contract finally. So um, those pieces are there and those are going to talk with whoever. Uh, we just need to deal with the artist and the flags. Because if you recall, he had these sort of silk flags behind them when they were on Talkwoods. Um, they tore on the wind within two months. So we need them done in a different material. So, but we finally own them.
What then, you have to answer my question.
Yeah, a hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah. Right, no, I, I still would like to reserve funding decisions until the September eighteenth meeting. Including your request for funding, but it seems to me that we've already approved money for the, the, the youth mural, which is not going to be spent short term. Clearly, that has come back to you among other things. So a long ways off. So my suggestion is that we approve tonight, giving the Arts Commission on a long basis, that funding. Since it's already been allocated, I have to worry about adding to the budget. And then we can revisit additional funding in September.
Um.
Does that make sense?
Some clarification on the amount. Did you request two fifty? Okay, and what would be a reasonable timeframe to ask for reimbursement?
Jay.
Um. Actually, I consulted with our planning director on the timing of when the warehouses are uh, expected to be complete with the um, planning entitlement process, meaning the next step would be the Building Department pulling permits and that's when they have to pay fees. He thought that would happen sometime early in twenty twenty six.
Okay, so just a, uh, just another process point is if the commission moves tonight to um, do this funding. It, it does have to go in front of the City Council, because it is a new appropriation, even though it is a front of cash. So we would have to have a staff report, probably our consent going from the City Council. But it would go with the commission recommendation. Um, and I can assure you that there is, Measure J has no cash flow problem. So I would have, I, I'm very confident in saying that it's a commission wanted to approve this. This fits well within the Measure J budget.
The two, two hundred and fifty?
Two fifty.
Two fifty.
Yeah, and as I said, the the urgency for me is this work is waiting in storage to be installed. We can't trigger the money, even if you approve tonight, council still needs to approve it at their first September meeting. And then the work can go in place.
It's, you, you come at an interesting time, because I think we're just shell shocked still from the five million that we thought we had.
Welcome to my world.
I think I'm speaking on behalf of the commissioners with that, but that's another subject. Um, and it, it sounds like the chair wants to fund this, but we'd be, the agenda report would essentially say something like, we're still going to fund the Filipino mural. It's just not in the short term. That if we could move that money, it's still just keeping on the books for the future?
Yeah, we could do that. I, yeah, the, the, there's going to be a, a period of a few months before we start issuing checks to community initiative projects, so. Uh, depending on the timeframe for repayment that, you know, you guys think it is, I think if you're going to bottom tonight, we need to get uh, that reasonable timeframe from Gary and Jay, and just uh, so that you can approve it with the repayment within a certain period of time.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment. Um.
Sure.
Yeah, I was just thinking, like, our fiscal year runs from July of twenty twenty five to June of twenty twenty six. And so if we expect this to be repaid in early twenty twenty six, all of this is going to be happening within the same fiscal year.
Yeah.
And perhaps we're overthinking it, because the difference between one forty and two fifty in the budget overall is, you know, a drop in the, a drop of the bucket, you know, it's a rounding error. And so because it is a loan, maybe another way to think about it, it would be repaid within the fiscal year. It's just it's just a paper exercise, really. And if there is great urgency, because this stuff is ready to go and just sitting in storage.
Are there commissioners? Any thoughts?
Is there any risk to the loan not being paid back within the?
No, no, no. Question. Yeah, you know, what I will say is, um, I know Peter and Andrea for other, you know, Andrea and her sister sit here together. I'm not the spender. I'm, I'm pretty conservative on this stuff. And that's why, you know, I like to manage the budget as tightly as I can. And we were kind of smacked in the face with stuff outside of our control. But, you know, the, the, the money will be there. So.
Let me ask a additional question. In terms of the, if I remember right, one half percent of of the uh, fees are paid based on uh, when a, the building, building permit is issued and or all whatever the term is. With the projects that you talked about, how much is that one half percent of it? I don't think, Jay, do you have that answer?
Uh, I do not. I was just going to.
You're going to, you're going to cover the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar.
Um, I would still have to do that calculation. Um, not quite sure yet. Um.
Because then we might not be paying back this fiscal year.
And just so you know, we are always working for money that's in the immediate. You know, then we'll get another development fee, then another development fee, and then that, you know, so it's just the, it's what making our budgeting very challenging.
Any thoughts?
Well. I, I can say that another project that uh, was under construction north of the ten freeway, which was a battery um, storage facility, I believe our um, public art fees from that project was around uh, three hundred seventy thousand dollars. Is that what we paid back to you fall?
Yeah.
About three hundred seventy thousand dollars. So I don't know that that's an apples to apples Harrison. Um, but that was another large project that was on in the same area.
Thank you, Jay.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I guess I, I think because the city's already paid for this art and it's really about the installation, getting this out in the community. We have the funds to be able to loan the money. I, I'd rather see the art out in the community, I think, at this point. Uh, and I would recommend we don't tie, especially in any of our minutes, or I don't want to tie other community initiated projects specifically to this loan. I feel like that's for comfort, for the discussion, I think that was helpful, but I'd rather just say, if we're going to approve the funds, I'd rather do such Measure J's approve the funds alone.
And I, I just, for clarity, as a chair, one of my biggest pet peeves is setting bad precedent on things. Like us paying installation fees for donated art from outside people. Um, so just know that this money will not go, will only go to the installation of these pieces. We're not going to use this money to say, oh, we want to fund another piece of artwork or another piece of artwork. To me, this is very, very clean and simple. And this is something that, as you said, we have the artwork already and the communities are waiting for.
So it's dedicated to the six projects or six pieces you described.
Correct. That's it. And if the, if the money comes in less, that money's returned. We're not going to all of a sudden say, oh, let's do, you know, candy cane art. Or something like that.
All right, and we can do a discussion of this stuff.
Another question, if um, if for some reason the project that's being discussed does not go forward with the building permit by June, are there other funds to repay this loan? Uh, public arts does have its own budget allocations from uh, the current um, development projects that are in place. I'm not sure what the remaining amount for the fiscal year would be. Um, but there is some carryover of funds, so it is it is possible and conceivable that other funds would be there. It's just a matter of time.
Thank you all. Any other questions about this? If that, would one of the commissioners like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Um, I thought your description was quite apt. Frankly, I don't, we wrote that down, but it is a motion to approve the request to fund a loan in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the specific six public arts commission pieces that we talked about.
Sir, second.
I second that question.
Hey, additional discussion. I, I call the motion, um, all in favor of the motion is pending, same vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Other any opposed? Great, we will all go vote.
Yes. Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Shown?
Approved.
Commissioner Thicpin? Yes. Commissioner Hopkins?
Affirmed.
Commissioner Newby?
Yes.
Commissioner Travis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Travis?
Uh, yes.
Chair Sipkins?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, sir.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I will say that to me, this is perfect use of Measure J, because you're beautifying the communities. It's really what it is. And for this amount of money, beautifying six city parks. So thank you.
Invite us to the.
I was going to say, I was going to say, when we have the dedication ceremony, Measure J will get a call out and you will all be invited.
One of the phones.
And then um, when you have some downtime, I'd love to come back and answer more questions about the art collection and things like that, and other ways we can work together. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Chair Thicpin, just uh, um, uh, suggest, make a suggestion for um, based on what we've learned about the public commission for the future community initiated kind of project applications. If, you know, depending on, like, I, I, I think there's a lot of kind of uh, fact variables, but either at the very beginning of the application or at the end, would it be helpful to mention that there is this sort of public summit? Yeah, opportunity for people who are interested in uh, public art pieces or a community, because we have a community that really values art and they, uh, I think they might think that the community initiated applications, projects from Measure J are the only way to submit recommendations for public art. So perhaps we can redirect to, you know, the commission, Public Arts Commission meetings. Um, there's public comment opportunities there.
Excellent suggestion. I, I think that would be helpful for our future meetings. Have representatives of the City Councils, we discussed at the City Council meeting in May. But also they have presentations by uh, uh, mission chairs like Gary to come in and tell us about what sustainability plans that's going forward and what the Human Rights Commission plans going forward, so that we can work in coordination with other commissions and what we decide.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, because we, I think the lack of clarity on how their processes work in terms of decisions um, made it such that it was kind of confusing for us when we were reviewing community applications, uh, community initiated applications. So, yeah, as we maybe learn about their processes and because we have this like large bucket that transcends categories from the community initiated projects. Uh, it might be helpful for us to be sort of the liaisons to, you know, we can get all these applications and then review here, but also recommend, you know, because there's not a lot of, uh, we can't fund everything, right? So.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next on the agenda is public comment and on agenda items, and I'm assuming that everybody's left the room there. Are going to be any public talk? Hopefully not. Uh, Chris, what is yours for whatever you want to say at the end of the meeting?
Oh, great. Uh, I'm going to move on to eleven, Chair.
All right.
Uh, very important item, um, couple of things on the community initiative projects that were referred by that commission is uh, between David Aaron, Joel and Director of Parks, Nick and Sal, we're going to go through those projects. I think we've got a meeting on the calendar already. To go through the projects to confirm whether they'll be grants or city staff projects. So uh, they're not, whatever I have in the budget, which you will see online, uh, it's not set, so we're going to go through and make sure that there truly grants. So I want to talk a little bit about the grant process tonight, because it's very different than what it was a couple of years ago. Uh, back in September twelfth twenty four, I think everybody has staff informed that, taking the City Council for approval, we implemented new procedures for grant for organizations that receive grant funds. Um, so I'm going to direct everybody to attach the A of the staff report, you'll have to flip it over, and it's a memo that is written to the council from our city manager, Scott Sal, outlining the process. This is the process that we will follow for grants. We'll go down to the funding of large projects in lump sum. So we have designated in most of the grants that we have, uh, in our community initiative projects are greater than this amount. So we have said that any grant that's issued for seventy five thousand dollars or more, we're not going to issue a lump sum payment to that organization. If it's seventy five to two hundred, we're going to split that payment up into at least two payments. If it's more than two hundred thousand, we're going to split that payment into four payments. Uh, what we would like to have is, we would like to do this on a reimbursable basis. It's the safest and most controlled method for the commission to be able to uh, issue a payment, because we, we will get an invoice likely, we will get a uh issue a payment, because we we will get an invoice likely, we will get a detailed explanation of work performed to date. And then we will reimburse the organization for their expenses up into uh the amount of uh of what was approved. If for some reason the project doesn't move forward as a reimbursable project, and we can determine that whenever we, you know, case by case phases, uh, we would still split the payment into four payments. We would still have periodic payments at that time, not on a regular basis. Uh, but we would still ask for progress reports from each organization on the work they've done to date, timing of the completion of the project. And any other relevant information that gives the commission comfort, that when we issue these dollars, that uh we're issuing them appropriately. So that's number one, funding large projects in lump sum. We go to number two, regular reports and invoices, I just mentioned this, we are gonna expect every time we issue a payment to a grant E, that we will have a report and uh an invoice, uh, the report will be descriptive of the work done to date and any other relevant information. And the next one, the vetting process for new organizations, this is probably the most important and it's probably going to be the most impactful to the organizations. Um, because we have small organizations, we have larger organizations, smaller organizations are probably gonna be more affected by this than the larger ones. But what we do, if you kind of skip down to the list, and look at the bottom paragraph where we talk about all nonprofit organizations, or any organization we issue a grant to is gonna be subject to the city verifying their IRS nonprofit status. That they're in good standing with the Secretary of State. Flip over to the next page. That they uh are, have registered with the DOJ, charitable trusts, if they are one. And they have to be, uh, we will check their status on the franchise task board. Um, also, we'll go through a finance check and a city code enforcement check to be sure there's nothing in that organization that would lead us to believe that uh they've got any, uh, the city has any actions against that organization. For small organizations, this could be an issue, and um we we currently do, we're in the second year of this process with the cities uh small grants sponsorship program, where we cover all of this. We have organizations that don't meet all those criteria, and we will make them meet the criteria if it's applicable to the organization before we issue them any funds, and it could take a while. Um, it's taken some organizations twelve months to become uh compliant with these rules, so um, you know, uh, it's important to to let our grantees know this, I hope that they see us meeting and and pay attention to it, because they can get started making sure that their paperwork is clean. The next um item is the independent audit. So for any organization that's seventy five thousand dollars or more, we are requiring them to have an independent audit. A lot of the larger organizations already do this, it's not a problem for them. Again, the smaller organizations uh are potentially going to have an issue. Uh, we have said in the detail surrounding, surrounding this audit that they don't have to undergo a full independent audit, they can do what's called an agreed upon procedures audit that specifically identifies internal control procedures, and that they have their internal control procedures in process, and that's why we ask for an internal audit because the auditors will always opine on internal controls and be sure that they're compliant and they're in process, and and if they're not, it won't come out in the audit. And then the next couple, uh, identifying responsible party on staff, so once the grantees are known, the city manager will identify a staff person to be uh associated with that grant, uh, probably me, David, or Joel. And then further to that, I think we've agreed to as a commission Chair, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we would have a commission member that would also be assigned to a particular project. And that would help city staff not be so foregrounded with making sure that the grantee is compliant, uh, making sure the project is on time and they're using the funds appropriately and to identify their application, and that's our responsibility as city staff and commissioners will be to meet this um, to meet this uh this requirement. The next step, that staff training is just that ci- city staff will undergo, has undergone training uh to to be more identifiable to cases of, that could potentially be fraud or uh organizations that are not complying with the requirements. I wanted to cover that tonight. Um, it's very important, um, we got a lot of dollars going out the door. And so we all need to work together, city staff and our commission, to be sure that these funds are used appropriately. And um we take it very serious here at the city.
My question is, um, do we send these to the grantees or have this, has it been sent to them?
So it has not been sent to them. Once we identify that they are a grantee through, after we have this internal meeting, we will be notifying them of the requirements before they get any thoughts at first.
You, you and, I'm sorry. You envision this, the commissioners on this commission going through the C P N training with the staff flung through?
Um, I don't know if it's necessary, um, we could take a look at it and see. Uh, and we could, with the commission, we 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 can make a determination, we should be taking that support.
I know you made the new vice chair.
In the future, will those requirements be part of the application, so people know before they submit an application, this is the, this is
A good suggestion, I think we can incorporate that.
Yeah, just glancing at what I think will be the grants, really any that are over seventy five thousand should be fine, they're all
Yeah.
nonprofit organizations, uh, so we're probably not gonna have a problem there. For those that are under seventy five, we've got a few that might be, you know, twenty thousand, fifty thousand. Are we, we can still decide to not pay that, we can still do it as a reimbursement, and they don't fall under these specific guidelines, but
Yeah, we could, yeah, we can, they don't fall under the, yeah, but we can choose.
Still have a contract.
Yeah, we would still have a contract with them, certainly. Um, and um we would still have them go through all of the um requirements to be clean with the state. Uh, make sure that happy, we'll do all that before disbursement. We can disperse it in a lump sum, we can disperse it on a reimbursal basis, it's whatever the commission can choose at that point.
Okay.
Maybe we'll take more case by case.
So we have a nonprofit that doesn't have the ability to front the funds to pay for it, we can be flexible with that.
Yeah, and I think that's the, that's the reason for up to seventy five, is we know that we have some smaller organizations that we could take.
Thank you.
Christian O B, have a question.
That just confused, confused me, so as I understand, the seventy five is a threshold, the, an award of seventy five thousand dollars or more is a threshold for having um, an audit or the uh other process you described. But I my, before I asked this question, my understanding was that any nonprofit would have to comply with, you know, filing with Secretary of State, filing with, okay, so
Yeah, they have to make all the compliance, of of whatever the amount is, they have to be clean with the state and the city. Um, it's just the seventy five threshold is really how we pay them out, how we disperse the funds.
Vice Chair.
Does some standard contract template give them like a idea where to comply and like, I I'm assuming some may drop off because they just aren't complying with our new standards?
Yeah, I don't know that the contract says that, I'd have to reread it, these are fairly new since the last community initiative project. Uh, but we can, you know, we can suggest some things go into the contract. Of course, you have to run it by the city attorney's office, they will review all that information, make sure it's appropriate, make sure language is appropriate, but if we have things we want to put into the contract per these new requirements, I think it's our uh uh, we can do that.
I would say the vast majority of these are, if you're a nonprofit, you need to do it.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, agree.
I I mean, it's required by law to file the state of the Secretary of State and
Yeah, you can't, you really should not be doing business unless you have done most of these things.
One, one final question I have, Chris, is I don't know, I can't remember the precise number, but whatever thirty nine has community initiated project requests that be approved. Um, it's gonna take a long time for those to get through the whole process.
Right.
Based on the economy, my guess is that maybe those be underfunded.
Could be.
They have, we're gonna have then make a determination will we give them the additional funding or will the project not go forward? And then, in that case, the money is gonna be deposited in measure J account, is that correct?
Yeah, and uh it it would be, and it would go, but it would stay within the community initiated project bucket. Well, so it wouldn't go to anything else other than community initiated projects. Um, I will say if it's a grant, um, typically in the past, I haven't been here that long, but we've kind of stick to the budget to the amount that we've approved. If it goes over budget, it's really up to the organization to find the funds to finish the project. Now, city ranked project is a little bit different, because it's city ranked, we have a little more flexibility to be able to authorize over just with city ranked projects. We can on a grant, we just really historically have done that.
And any other questions by any of the commissioners?
And 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 I just, I just wanna could uh just reaffirm something you said, it will take a little bit to get through the process. Melissa's gonna be the one unfortunately doing a lot of this labor work to confirm with these state organizations, and it will take a while to do that, so it's gonna be easier with some of the bigger ones like M I S L and the Boys and Girls Fund, which they already have been vetted through this grants and sponsorship program. So we won't have to do that ourselves if they've already been vetted, those projects should be able to get started right away.
Eisenhower.
Eisenhower as well.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Well, but just back to it, not that I would think that M I S L or some of these larger ones wouldn't do it, but the I believe the Secretary of State's is annual and the Department of Justice is every two years. So someone could be compliant in two year and not in the next.
Yeah, we we just go by whatever's on the websites of those organizations, and if they are the state's organization, the state says they're clean, we confirm that as well. Okay, I have one more thing, uh, on this Jim item eleven, and uh it's just to talk a little bit about the budget. Um, obviously, you can talk about tonight, probably a good thing since it's posted seven o'clock, but I would recommend, Chair. Uh, I know we have a whole month before we have, uh, two months before we have another meeting. But I'd recommend we try to keep the agendized items short so we can talk a lot about the budget. Um, it is a, you'll see, it's been posted online uh for the public to see, and it's for you all to see, and you will see it's a lot. Uh, there's a lot on there, uh, so I'm hoping that you all will take the opportunity to go through it. Right now, any questions? I am also going to offer uh up my time, if you, between now and that September meeting, if you wanna uh talk about the budget with me, you're welcome to set some time up with Melissa. You can see in person, we can do soon, we can do a phone call, anything like that to get some of the questions out of the way, out of the way before the September meeting. Um, so I'm willing to do that, uh, if there's a group of you that want to come uh in into the city hall and sit and talk about the budget, I'm willing to do that as well, so, but I'm offering that up, and I encourage everyone to take advantage of that offer so that we can get some of the questions out of the way before the September meeting. Or we could do it in the bank of John's.
Yes.
I do have a question, have they officially notified everyone that that they were receiving?
Yes, um, and that email was sent out to all the commissioners with the template of the letter that was
gotcha.
um, sent out to all the
That's all I had, except uh just going forward, I expect uh everybody to wear a jacket at this evening.
In July.